Actually presented and the council was concerned about having, you know, a part, a portion of the frontage commercial and the other portion residential. And the they will, are you able to go to the next slide? I can't get it to go to the next slide. I promise there's another slide. There we go. Okay. Yeah, thank you. So this one now shows that them reserving the frontage as commercial and then having a cul-de-sac. So this, this concept ends up being a little different than what I had shown. Mine was more of an act of the napkin. This was done by an engineer. So this one shows 24 units and then so in, in the concept I did, I was thinking around 28. The difference here is that in order to hit the extra parking they need and the open space, that's what essentially ended up resulting in fewer units. So this is the latest. Now, one thing I'll clarify here is that in, in trying to get this all prepared for today, we, we prepared the development agreement, assuming 28 would be possible. It was written that way. The owner signed it and then we ended up getting this concept late yesterday after the agreement had been signed. Now, the agreement says they can have up to 28, but by the time again, they have parking in the open space, they'll basically likely end up being in this, in this boat. So that's the reason for the difference between the number in the agreement versus the actual concept is just the overlap. Usually we have the developer sign the agreement. In this case, it's the property owner and the reason is the property owner is retaining the commercial property and there are certain obligations on that. And when they sell the, when the current owner sells to the developer, they will inherit all the standards applicable to the residential. And so that's, this one took a little more finessing. So that, so that really is the difference is that now we have all of the, the frontage is remaining C2. The now, we now have a proposal with 24 units. And then the agreement includes provisions that deal with the commercial properties as well as the residential. So for example, there are certain provisions that get triggered because we're creating this boundary now. So for example, there's a wall that's required between the commercial and residential that didn't, that wasn't required before. There's landscaping along that boundary that wasn't required before. So there's a number of things that get triggered because of this change.
Any, any questions for Steve?
Yeah, I have one question. It commercial and fun right there. We have parking space. Is that enough for?
Yeah. So, so right now, so yes, on, for the existing use for Beto's, yes, the, on the south end, it's just a rental house that's there now. So at some point we'd expect that that would get either demolished or, or changed into some commercial use. And we'll look at the parking for that separate once that changes. But for as it sits currently, yes, there's enough parking for the Beto's use.
So could we in the motion adjust, make a motion that there's only 24 building or homes allowed on that? Change the development agreement?
We can. This is something I talked to Nicole about and this is just a technicality. So we could make that change. The only difficulty is if for whatever reason the owner didn't sign it. So cause her, so currently we have a signed agreement. If whatever reason they didn't sign it, we kind of end up being in sort of in limbo. That's the only difficulty there. I don't, I don't anticipate a reason them not signing it, but.
So would you have time to talk to them before the meeting and see if they're great with that because it's the land owner, not the actual developer?
I, I think they would be that the only challenge is that the land up. So there's a, there's an LLC and a family trust involved and part of the families in California. So that's the, that's the challenge of getting it signed and ready for today was dealing with out of state folks. So yeah.
Isn't this just a concept that won't necessarily be how the land is exactly developed?
Right, right. It, it is possible. They might be able to get a few more units, but probably not because again, this hasn't been through engineering. But that's why we say in the agreement, they can have up to that many, but they, there's no, it's okay to have fewer. They just can't have more.
If they had more, it would take away from the open space, which means they probably couldn't have more. So probably self-limiting at 24.
Correct. Right. So unless, unless they find a way to make the road shorter and get, you know, parking in some other way, there might be a way, but again, just based on this, I, I'm, you know, if they keep the road designed the same way, I don't see how they could get more.
Are they really hurrying in this, this one? Is it, can we wait for them to sign? And then we can move forward our resolution instead of, you know, you said, we don't want to go to a limbo. You know what I'm saying?
We, we could, if the commission or the council wanted, we could table it till the next meeting. That gives us time to just make any refinements, get it signed. And that way we don't have to, we're not in that odd limbo period there.
Hey, any other questions on this issue? Okay, thank you. And this is the only change we have for tonight. That's correct. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on tonight's agenda? Okay, perfect. Because we have tonight and tomorrow. So we'll now go to our first public hearing for the 27th. And we'll turn the time over to Ms. Jody Nap for application CT1 2025.
All right. Thank you. Jody Nap with planning and zoning. I apologize. I'm a little congested, so I have a cough drop in my mouth, but it sound worse than I feel. So here we go. All right. So the application here is a text amendment to chapter seven, 10 of our zoning ordinance and the applicant is West Valley City on this one. And it's basically to provide landscaping alternatives for our high image arterials. And so currently we have two requirements where it's either you have lawn or artificial turf. And so this just provides an alternative to that, that would not require either lawn or turf. With the presentation, so we've had some changes to our planning commission. And so I did go into a little more detail of the history of where this ordinance came from. And so I just, I kept that information in this presentation, but I'll just kind of highlight this a little bit quicker than normal. But basically this provision was first put into the city code back in 1984. And so it was title 15 originally. And then in the nineties, it changed to seven 13. And then we are here today with it under seven 10. But basically the standards have remained pretty much the same and the purpose has remained the same. And so this section, it just establishes landscaping standards along our, and sorry, and it's to improve the visual image of streets which serve as primary access points into the city. So that's why there's a list of streets and they're just referred to our high image arterials. And then we have different standards that also apply to some of these, but the, the main purpose of this is to set landscaping standards that are different and to go above and beyond just what someone would do on the site. And basically I did provide some additional city research in your packet as well. So I don't know if you want me to go into detail on that, but I can just basically summarize it. But we did call cities around the valley and basically just asked if they had any specific landscaping requirements along major streets, something that we do. Or if there's any place in the code where they actually require grass or turf. So people are a little bit all over the place. Again, we, we established this in 1984. So it's been something that we've worked really hard to try and get people to comply with as far as having these streets stand out as something different. So there's really not another city that has something that compares to that. Some of them have tree great requirements or like Taylorsville has a wall requirement that's similar to ours. Some have different design corridors and districts, but West Valley City is kind of unique in having this special list. And then there were not any other cities that actually required one. So a lot of them prohibit it or have caps, but don't actually require it. And then a lot of this is coming from Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. And so that's why I put this slide in here. And this is just right from their website. And so they just basically are pointing out that yes, we live in a desert and it's important to conserve water. But also it's just removing all the plants is not the objective. So they're still important for all the reasons that are listed here. Um, I'll just go over them really quickly, but no conserve smartly. Again, don't eliminate everything, but just think about what's being watered and where. I'm taking everything out, does create problems with urban heat islands, plants help with water filtration. And this one's basically why we're talking about this one today is just beautification and city ordinances just creates an environment that's people want to be in. Um, it's important for soil stabilization. I don't know if any of you guys are hikers or campers, but that's basically the cryptobiotic soil is like nature's, nature's fire mulch. So at some point important for soil stabilization. And then also wildlife habitat. So we just covered this quite a bit with planning commission, just why landscaping standards are important. So what we're looking at for the text itself is currently, again, the requirement is just that we have a lawn or artificial turf element in that setback. So it does say that 50% of that buffer, and again, we're just talking about the front setback buffer on those high image arterial streets that you need to have at least 50% lawn. And you can have artificial turf in lieu of the lawn, and then it goes over the tree requirement. So again, there's really not flexibility in that. You either have those two materials. That's basically what's provided in the code. So we've had some discussions with business owners, Granger Hunter Improvement District, and just kind of at city staff level, if there would maybe be some flexibility in that and what we'd want the new text to look like. And again, we do want this to be different and called out because it's, it is for our special streets and main corridors throughout the city. So we want these areas to look different than just the normal landscaping requirements. So our proposal is that we keep those two alternatives in there. So the 50% grass or artificial turf. But then add a second alternative that then says 75% live plant material coverage, not including tree canopies be provided in that area. And it would be a combination of deciduous and evergreen plants, just to provide some variety. And then at least two mineral ground covers. So you don't just have, you know, maybe a lava rock. And then just some plants spread in just to add a little bit more interest. And then 25% of the plants need to be five gallons. So just to make them a little bit bigger. So it's increasing the, the general plant coverage, but when eliminating the lawn, it just balances out to be that 75% instead of the, the 50, 25. I won't throw too many numbers out and get it all jumbled up, but that just kind of flushes out to basically be the same requirement. It's just providing flexibility. So people don't have to do lawn or turf.
Hey, any questions?
Maybe a question or a comment. I think you got contacted as well by a resident that wanted to do a circular driveway on a, on one of these streets for ease of access in and out. But current restrictions would prohibit that because of the 50% rule. But would this fix that?
Nope. This is more commercial. So we're going to come back and discuss residential in a couple of weeks.
Yep.
Where we're, okay. So even though like 3100 is on here, it has commercial and residential. This, if it's a home, it would be under the residential standards. If it's a business, it would be under the, this standard, correct?
Yeah. And I apologize. I didn't really specify that. This, this would be for commercial properties.
So when they're holding, moving forward on anything on that one until after that discussion. So Bangor Highway USANA, they have rocks. Do they have enough green or because they got kind of an exception, they're good with just rocks?
Yeah, that one was changed a long time ago. I remember Joseph Moore did that one. And so I think that, that predates anything that we had in the ordinance at that time.
More has been passed away for more than 20.
Yep. I remember the discussion though, because it was a big deal even back then. So.
And we just gave, basically gave them an exception. I mean, just made it possible for them to do that, right?
Yeah. So previous versions of the code, we did say if you had like a landscape architect prepare the plans or even like, like up in the triangle area of the city, if there wasn't water up there, we had some exceptions in place, but we no longer have exceptions. So that, that just was one of the changes over the years that was taken out.
So if one of the trucking yards wanted to put gravel in the park strip on 56th, there's not even an exception way to do it this now, but they can do the artificial turf.
Yep.
Because they couldn't do that earlier, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Until all the side conversations I've had with people on different occasions at different places.
This has been a very tricky code and made some changes and it, it impacts a lot of properties and it's been in place for a long time. So like I said, we worked hard to kind of keep up with everything, but yeah, it's, it's a hard one to work with.
And then does this address any of the burms that are required in certain districts? Those are just still required, correct?
Yeah.
So didn't Jack in the Box just do 100% rocks?
No, they are fixing that.
So they did do it.
They did.
But they're gonna fix it.
Yes.
Not to code.
No.
Okay.
The wall looks great though, but they just have to fix it.
That would just dawn on me.
So bring up USANA and Bangor. Would section B seem that they could, not that they have to come into compliance with this, but if somebody else was landscaping like USANA. As long as they had a little more plant coverage, they could still be okay and have rock and bolt.
Yep. There's some triggers in the code for older existing sites on when they have to bring it into compliance. So then we would look at it if they did that. But if.
Visual of what this would look like. And USANA is not that far off.
Yeah.
What questions on this one? Thanks for tackling it.
Yeah.
It's not an easy one. Okay, thank you. All right. Well, now, now go to application GPZ for 2024. Turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you again, Mayor. So we have another proposal to amend the general plan and zoning. So this one is a little bit up the street from the last one, 2996 South Redwood Road on about two and a half acres. So the general plan right now is for a commercial light and light manufacturing use. And the request is to change that to medium density residential and a zone change from A to RM. Uh, this is the property in question. So it is, it's on the west side and it's kind of sandwiched between Rocky Mountain Power Transmission Lines on the north. And then the American Heritage Mobile Home Park on the south. Here's a close up. So there are a couple of rental houses on the property now with a few outbuildings. So that's, those are the structures you see on the site. And then the piece to the west is part of the mobile home park. I believe that's part of their RV storage there to the, to the west. And then you do of course have the county park facility on the east side of Redwood Road. So this is just the zoning map. So you can see the area outlined in red here is the property in question. It's the A zoning and then just you can see what the surrounding zoning is in the area. Now this concept I put in just for some background. So originally when the applicant came or submitted their application, the concept was that you had the, the property in question here, the, the south parcel. And then you had the Rocky Mountain Power property to the north. And the idea was that they would either acquire or obtain an easement over the Rocky Mountain Power property to, for open space and then putting in the improvements along Redwood Road. So the, the planning commission saw that. We had a, a development agreement sort of geared towards that, but then Rocky Mountain Power ultimately said, I mean, initially they were open to the idea, but then upon further discussion, they decided they were not open to more of a permanent easement or, or selling the property. So for that reason, the applicant retooled and essentially excluded the, the Rocky Mountain Power property. So now what's before you now is, is just their property. So that, well, the property they have under contract, which is again, about two and a half acres. Uh, in this proposal, there are 26 units, then two and a half acres. These are, so the developer here, DAI is the same developer that did the H2O loss over by Decker Lake. And so what, uh, these units are very similar. So these are rental townhomes. These are all three bedroom units with a two car garage. They have, are proposing to have unfinished basements in the units. They've also talked about, because this is a smaller project, while it will have some amenities on site, it's just, it's, uh, the other project is much larger that they're talking about sharing amenities or allowing residents here to share the amenities at the other location by Decker Lake. Um, so here are some renderings, again, very similar to what was built over, over by Decker Lake. Um, these are the, the elevations for the front and sides, and then the rear. And then just the floor plan. So again, you have the two car garage. That's the middle floor plan. The second floor is on the right and then the basement would be on the left. And just color palette. So they, they are proposing some variation between buildings and colors. Uh, some pictures now. So this, um, this is looking south. Uh, so you can see this is from the property that's basically north of the power lines. This is looking through the power lines and then you can see the, the structures there are on the property in question. This is, uh, looking west. So from Redwood Road, looking west along the power corridor. The building there on the right side is an assisted living facility. This is looking east, uh, across Redwood Road. So this is looking to the southwest. So you can see the, the couple of homes that are again rentals on the property currently. Another looking almost directly south. Uh, the north house and then the south house. And I believe that's the, the last image. So again, to, to summarize here, their request is to change the zoning to the RM zone to demolish the existing structures and build a 26 unit rental town home development on the site.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Pastrick?
So it's, uh, 26 rental units.
Correct.
They're not going to be for sale.
Correct. Right. Same with the, the H2O loss project. That's, and those are all rental units as well.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have our consent agenda, which is typical acceptance of a warranty deed. Did anybody have any questions on that issue? Seeing none, we'll go on to our communications, the council calendar. Did anybody have any concerns or anything left off that? And then potential future agenda items.
Here I do have one.
Okay.
Craig just asked me to, uh, see who would be able to participate in the West Fest parade. They're working on getting those cars secured. So they just wanted to get a number. If you're able to come or not. Um, it's Saturday, June 14th. The parade starts at 10, but we would want you there at 9:45. So just wanting to see who's able to go.
And then the old cars again?
He said that they're working on a low rider car club that might be providing them this year.
Mine broke down like four times. It was fun. The last like quarter mile, I just jumped out and got another one. It was.
Not worth it. Well, you had problems right from the get go. They could get it started and then, yeah. So do you want to raise a hand if it's going?
That would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
So I already put an entry in.
Okay.
For myself. Should I not do that?
You can do both.
We can talk after.
Okay.
I'll tell you, let's talk after. I will be there.
He's done it. I've never done it. Don's done it.
He might be able to tell you how to do it.
Gets a little hairy in between.
When you got your bow.
Yeah.
So Tom, were you a yes? Okay. So everybody's a yes.
Okay.
Okay. There you go.
Hey, thank you.
And then council reports.
I did, uh, in the monthly meeting of the mosquito abatement. It's getting to become mosquito time. But his report was interesting. He said that our mosquito monitor, monitoring efforts are in full swing. Currently all of our traps are indicating a lower than average mosquito count. So that sounds good. Okay. But, uh, you know, we're kind of evaluating that, seeing if we need to move the traps around a little bit. And the water situation, to me, I thought it was a little different than what they're seeing with the official reports. But the Jordan River, the average discharge rate right now is 140 cubic feet per second, which is significantly lower than standard levels. So apparently they're holding a lot more water in
higher up?
Well, no, farther down, farther south.
Yeah.
And, uh, just to keep that going, but, uh, they've also, they also pointed out a snowpack this year right now is 68%. Last year at this same time was 143%. So the water is, there's gonna be a little tighter water here. And the reservoirs in Jordanale, Rock Porter, 80, 85%. Deer Creek's at 95% capacity and Utah Lake is at 96% capacity. So.
Yeah. And I think they're holding it in Utah Lake.
Yeah.
Or it just goes without being irrigation water to the Great Salt Lake.
Yeah.
So.
So. Right now it's looking a little lower than it has been. You know, when I go across the Jordan River last time, I looked down there and I thought it was as high as I've seen it. So.
Well, there's two different messages. So Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District does not have any restrictions on watering this year as far as we don't have enough. They still want everybody to conserve.
Yeah.
So there's two different messages going out, one from the governor's office and one from there. So. So listen to the governor and you'll conserve better and we'll be better off next year.
We'll all be better off. And they weren't saying go use the water, they're just saying it's not causing
Yeah.
a lot of mosquitoes yet, yet.
Oh. Hey, anybody else?
And so on Friday, they opened the trail, the bike trails at Lodestone. Don, Will and myself were there. And it was ribbon cutting and, yeah, it was it was good. A lot of people out there ready to go hop on the trails, so that was fun to see. And yeah, it's not like counting on that.
And we had our crossing guard dinner last week. That was really nice. We have a hundred crossing guards. And then we're going to have to hire more because of this. The school closures are actually going to make kids getting to the school they're reassigned to harder. So we'll have to have more crossing guards than we had before with the closures. Which doesn't sound right, but it is. So, but I think they do a great job for our kids, so. That was a nice dinner they put on.
I know Orchard is closing, what others? Redwood, what other schools?
Redwood and what it was, three, Orchard? I don't remember. I thought they said three though in the I know they're changing Valley Crest to a
A Valley Crest to a language version.
Oh, yeah. What language? You know, Spanish, isn't it?
Spanish.
Yeah. So those kids will be redirected.
So it'll be reassignments students.
So. Okay. Seeing nothing else, we do have need for a closed session tonight for disposition of real property. If someone would like to make that motion, maybe we will not do any other business and just adjourn from that meeting. From this meeting during that closed session.
Close session for disposition of real property and adjourn that toward the other side of these. Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second, Ms. Cavill.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Norfeld?
Yeah.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, give everybody five minutes. Most we need to be here. Yeah.